Today is Wednesday, May 25th. I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. We will now say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Kuzamano?
Here.
Trustee Lucido?
Here.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Gillette?
Here.
Clerk Posey, here. Supervisor Viviana?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Move to approve is presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the agenda. Members, please vote. Oh, somebody forgot to log in?
No, it kicked me out.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills, is there a motion?
Move to approve?
Support.
Any discussion on the bill run? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the bills. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Approval of the previous meeting's minutes from May 11th, 2022, the closed session meeting minutes from May 11th, 2022, and the 2022-23 budget public hearing from May 19th. Is there a motion?
Move to approve?
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the previous meeting's minutes from May 11th, 2022, the closed session, 2022, May 11th, 2022, and the public hearing on May 19th, 2022. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public comment, this is for agenda items only. Anyone who wishes to speak may approach the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. Anybody participating remotely may digitally raise their hand. Nobody present, anybody remotely?
Yes.
No, no one wishes to make public comment, so we will move on. On the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent items? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the consent agenda? Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item eight, we have a request to approve an award for a three-year agreement for the HVAC preventative maintenance and service totaling $90,952. And for the HVAC building management support totaling $48,358, both to SI Energy Engineering. Is there a motion?
Move to approve?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I just want to start by thanking Janet Solomon, Jason Gally, and Dan Buckholz for being a part of the team to work together to make this come to fruition. So after reviewing all the bids and qualifications, experience, calling the references, and their cost evaluation, we determined that SI Energy was the best fit for the township, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions or discussion? We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the HVAC contracts for SI Energy Engineering in the amounts of $90,952 for a three-year total and of $48,358. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item nine, we have a request to approve a construction change order number two for the 23 Mile Road water main contract extension. This would be for DePonyo Contracting, Inc., in the amount of $1,837,841. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, so with this project, as I'm sure everybody is aware, the township water department is trying to stay one step ahead of Macomb County to make sure that we're removing the water main as they're widening 23 Mile Road. So trying to make it as seamless as possible to move the water main out from underneath the road before they widen it. With this contract, DePonyo has done a fantastic job. We're very happy with the current project they've done so far. If you've seen, they kind of started up again today, most likely more tomorrow, getting the abandonment of the existing water main from the previous project underway, and going to be finishing that up. So they'll be kind of taking from that point on, continuing on from Woodside Drive and Sioux Drive. It'll be the last section of water main before the widening. With the extension, what DePonyo is doing is keeping all of their pricing, their costs, they're matching the cost of the existing project. The only increase we're going to be seeing is because of materials, which in the board packet, you'll see the letters from East Jordan Ferguson and the like showing the consistent increases they're receiving. So we're strictly receiving an increase due to material costs. If we were to go out for a bid on this, outside of doing this extension, we're probably looking at everything increasing, cost of their work, all that stuff. So you're looking at a 34% increase versus the roughly 13 to 15 we're looking at right now. So with this, we'd like to move forward with allowing DePonyo the extension so we can move forward with this project. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone have any questions? None? Okay. We have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the change order number two for the 23 Mile Road contract extension for DePonyo Contracting, the amount of $1,837,841. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 10, is a request to approve the purchase of a DPW dump truck not to exceed $122,638.28, and at the same time sell the old 1991 DPW dump truck. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Mr. Johnson?
All right, for this one, I want to thank Janet Solomon and Mike Rickett for doing all the legwork on this one. They did all of the work on this, I'm just the face that gets to present it, so thank you guys. So this is a 31-year-old truck, they spent roughly $31,000 total on it in 1991. We've spent $25,000 in maintenance costs in the last eight years, on top of $6,000 in rental for two months because we had to fix the truck. So you're looking at $31,000 in repairs the last eight years, and we bought it for that cost. So it's time for an overhaul, time for a new truck to be able to utilize, and the only adjustment on this is there's a 5% increase potentially with aluminum, because of the cost of aluminum, so there's a little bit of a buffer in there in case aluminum increases, we can cover that cost in case it increases there. So that's where the "do not exceed" comes into play, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I got one quick question. Are we putting the old dump truck on mitten, or are we trying to, or we sell it ourselves?
Janet?
Janet.
Janet. I guess that's hers. Yeah, I realize that.
Yeah, I will list the old truck either on mitten, or I will use another website called GovDeals.
Okay.
But we'll definitely try to sell that.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the make and model of the dump truck that we're spec'd out to purchase?
It's a Mack, it's a Mack truck, and I can't remember the name of the dump body, but it's a Mack truck we'll be purchasing, chassis.
Is that okay, Charlie?
That's a new truck. That's always okay.
You're very particular about your equipment that you run, I know, so...
We run Peterbilt's. One question on it, is it in stock, or are they building it, or?
Yeah, so once, by doing it right now, we will get it by December. It'll be built, we'll get the, it's not in stock, but they're going to have it ordered, so when it comes in, we'll have it that and built and put the bet on it, it'll get it by December. If we don't do it right now, we won't get another truck for two years.
Well, and all about that, yeah. Yeah, I understand, that's why I wanted, it's in their system?
Yes.
To order?
Yes.
Good.
But once it's approved, it'll be in their system to order, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
So this is baked into next year's budget? Any other questions or discussion? Okay, motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the purchase of a dump truck not to exceed $122,683.28, and to sell the 1991 dump truck. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 11, we have a request to authorize an offer of employment in the Parks and Rec Department. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Support.
Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. The Township Board of Trustees approved HR to recruit for the position of Rec Programmer One. This position was posted in accordance with the provisions of the Ask Me CBA Local 1917. The selection committee is recommending Riley Hayes for hire. This is contingent upon successful completion of all their post offer requirements, and we're looking to bring her on May 31st, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion?
This is a budgeted position, by the way.
Okay, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to make an offer of employment in the Parks and Rec Department to Riley Hayes. Motion passes unanimously. Item 12 is a request to authorize offers of employment in the Fire Department. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you again, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. HR posted for the position of full-time firefighters. These positions were posted internally for the MAFF, Paid-on-Call Firefighters Bargaining Unit. We received seven applications, the selection committee interviewed six on May 19th, 2022, and we are recommending the following applicants, Joseph Martoni and Ryan Randlet. Joe is to my left here, he has 15 years with Macomb Township as a paid-on-call. Ryan is to his right, and he has three years as a paid-on-call with Macomb Township. This is a budgeted position, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion?
Just one, when do they start?
We're looking at May 30th, 2022, yep, next week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Okay, motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to extend an offered employment in the Fire Department to Joe Martoni and Ryan Randlet. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 13 is a request to authorize the promotion of employee 1311. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. HR received authorization to post for the position of Finance Analyst. This position was posted in accordance with the provisions of the Ask Me Local 1917 CBA. There was one internal applicant, they met all the requirements for this position, and the CFO was recommending the promotion of this employee, and her name is Amy Gutierrez. It is a budgeted position, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, authorize the promotion of Amy Gutierrez. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to Amy. Moving on to item 14, thank you, Jeff. We have a rezoning request in the, rezoning request from AG to Commercial C2. This is for permanent parcel ID 0814200023, which is located at the southwest corner of 24 Mile Road and North Avenue. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. As you mentioned, this property is located at the southwest corner of 24 Mile and North Avenue, and they are proposing to rezone this to C2 or general commercial. I know they have some ideas of what they want to use the property for, but it would allow anything within C2. This does match the master plan, and the planning commission recommended unanimously to approve this rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
Are any of the surrounding parcels zoned C2?
Not currently, no.
So this would be standalone in the entire area, C2?
It would be standalone at this time. Kitty Corner on the northeast corner is also master planned for a commercial as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Box, thank you, Mr. Kuzamano. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the rezoning request from AG to C2 on parcel ID 0814200023. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 15, we have a request to approve the First Amendment Consent Judgment. This is in Town Center Village North, located in the northeast corner of 25 Mile Road and Broughton. Permanent parcel ID 080330008. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This is located just off Broughton Road, just north of 25 Mile, east of Broughton Road. This is, it's actually the Second Amendment to the consent. I did send around an update to your packet yesterday. Part of the reason it says First Amendment is because we were trying to figure out exactly how to word this, but the primary change in the consent judgment is that the developer has worked to get an approval for an abandonment of a drain in the area, and by doing so, they've changed around some of their parking on their concept plan that's included in the consent judgment. All of the township staff is in favor of this change, so they are amending the consent at this time, and we are in full support of this.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions or discussion? Yeah, hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the Second Amendment Consent Judgment for Permanent Parcel ID 080330008. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 16, is a request to approve the preliminary plan. This is for Town Center Village South, located at the southeast corner of 25 Mile Road and Broughton. This would be for permanent parcel ID numbers 0809200018, 0810100019, and 0810100021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This is the property just north of the library. We probably all noticed about a year ago that they removed a bunch of trees. There isn't a consent agreement on this property. The site plan does match the concept plan that's in the consent agreement. It's taken them a long time to get to this point, but they are ready with their plan, and they're here looking for approval. This did go to the Town Center Committee and was recommended unanimously for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any discussion, questions? Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the preliminary plan in the Town Center Village South for permanent parcel IDs 0809200018, 0810100019, and 0810100020. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 17, we have a request to approve the recommended 2021 to 22 budget amendments and reallocations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Smith?
Good evening. Tonight, I'm bringing forth in front of you a couple budget amendments, along with associated reallocations for each fund. Nothing has changed since we spoke last week and the figures that were presented. This is simply to bring the budget more in line with what the actuals are for this fiscal year that we're currently in through June 30th of 2022. The first fund is the general fund. Revenues need to be increased due to higher-than-expected grant funding, state share revenue, and sales of properties. The fire operating fund revenues and expenditures need to be increased due to an accounting practice per our auditors of running the fire pension tax collection into the fund and then out of the fund, so it's a wash. The municipal roadway fund revenues need to be decreased and the expenditures increased. The reduction in revenues is due to grant funding that we didn't end up getting this year, and the expenditures are due to timing of construction of the new sidewalks, of some new sidewalks throughout the township, and of an unanticipated road project that will likely be paid before June 30th of this year. The fire pension fund and retiree healthcare fund revenues need to decrease due to lower-than-expected investment income. In the public improvement fund, we are, I'm requesting an increase due to capital expenditures in the parks that, it's part of that $1 million that the board is allowing parks to utilize, but they want to get started now, before July 1st. So we're putting, we're increasing that budget a little bit. This would have to be done by budget, or by, I'm sorry, by resolution of the Township Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions or discussion? Does that have to be a resolution? Coincidence question, so the park spending that they started, there's going to be a correlating reduction in the final budget numbers we present at the next meeting, correct?
Correct, by about $100,000.
Now, there's no discussion? No, we need to redo the motion because we didn't have it as a resolution? Okay.
I resolve that we do these things.
Thanks, Leon. Okay, no more discussion. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to adopt a resolution for the 2021 budget amendments and reallocations. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzamano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviana?
Yes, resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Moving on to item 18, is a request to upgrade the Microsoft Exchange Online Plan One licenses over to Microsoft G3 licenses, which would be an increase from the initial board approval by an amount of $13,104, and to approve an additional 10 G3 licenses for future use.
Motion to approve?
So this was brought to the board, we have switched over to Microsoft 365 for the townshipwide for all of our email and applications. The originally proposed and the Microsoft Exchange Online Plan One licenses don't include the retention that we need to have, and the Microsoft G3 licenses do. They are, however, more money, and that's for a total of 66 licenses that we are already currently using. And the reason we're asking for 10 more is because when we have employees, you know, leave and come and go, we need a little bit of an overlap because we need to keep licenses active even after people have departed, and we need to have new licenses available to bring on people. But there will be a time when we can deactivate those licenses and recirculate them, but we anticipate there'll be a lot of overlap, so we need to have a cushion of, we figured at least 10 licenses. I think that's as best I can explain it.
Mr. Chairman, is the lack of these licenses causing any dysfunction or to critical services?
Currently, the 66 licenses that we're paying for that are on the Plan One, they don't have the record retention, so meaning if someone were to delete an email out of them, they would be gone forever, and we need to have proper record retention.
All right, that's the only issue, then?
That's the only issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions or discussion? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to upgrade the Plan One to the G3 licenses, in the amount of $13,104, and to purchase an additional 10 licenses as needed. Motion, members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 19 is a request to approve the quote submitted by IT Wright for the server replacement in the amount of $116,633.57. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
This item is part of our long-term IT Capital Improvement Plan. It is proposed for next year's budget, however, seeking approval today so that they can begin to order the materials. It's anticipated that it'll take six to eight weeks to get in all the new equipment, and the server replacement should actually take place sometime at the end of July, early August. The current server is beyond its useful life, and it's something that was identified over a year ago as in needed upgrade. That'll take any questions? If there's no questions, motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the promote for the server replacement in the amount of $116,633.57. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 20, this is a request to authorize the supervisor to accept the offer of $1.2 million for parcel 200810400025, which is located on 24 Mile Road, it'd be the northeast corner of 24 Mile Road in Foss, and to work with the Township Attorney to execute any documents to close the sale. So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Support.
We got it. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to note that the decision this board made to hire a firm to help us represent our properties and market our properties has played off substantially with this particular sale. This is the Foss Road property that was originally assessed at 850, we thought we might be able to get 850 for it, but we got a number of rounds of offers and end up at $1.2 million, which is substantially more than we had thought we might have the opportunity to get a year ago. In addition, this sale, assuming it follows through the offer, is completed and closed upon, represents the last piece of the funding that we're looking for for Pitchford Park's development. So as the board's very well aware, Pitchford Park is a property that was donated, you know, to the township very generously, and since then, we have been trying to get the money to develop that park out without any form of a tax increase, or by taking money from other departments, and we did that through the reallocation of assets. By taking some properties that are really not generating any value to the residents so we can redirect and redeploy those resources in a way that residents will be able to see and appreciate in value. So this $1.2 million, on top of some of the other sales we've already done, is going to end up being an important part of a beautiful new park for our community. So I just wanted to make sure we saw where the piece of the puzzle that this sale represents. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple questions. The parcel 25 is current, what is its current zoning?
Josh, what is?
I believe it's R1.
It is R1 right now?
Yep.
And with the purchaser, there's been no formal or informal discussions or negotiations regarding changing that zoning?
That's correct. As part of the negotiations with all the purchasers, we had presented at least a concept plan of a, how would you describe it, Josh?
It was kind of a layout similar to a traditional subdivision with larger lots.
Country-sized estate lots.
Yeah, currently, there is no sewer on this property, so each property would need a septic system, which requires larger lots. So unless the purchaser would desire to spend a lot of money to drag sewer because it's quite a ways away, they would need to develop these with septic systems.
I think it's on the letter of intent. I believe the number was of that, for that forty-one-acre parcel, twenty-six to twenty-eight units. So the intention is after they put in a road, they'd be larger, three-quarters of an acre to an acre lots. Now, once it's sold and it's theirs, but that is the intention of the project.
So it's my understanding that the eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand that was assessed value and the increase in value is just because of competitive pressures to obtain the parcel. There's no direct or indirect promises being made which enhance the value of this property.
None, none.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzma. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none. We, I have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to authorize a supervisor to accept the offer of one-point-two-million dollars on parcel ID two-zero-zero-eight-one-zero-four-zero-zero-zero-two-five, and to work with Township Attorney to execute any documents necessary to close the sale. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to public comment. This would be for non-agenda items. Anyone who wishes to speak may approach the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. Anyone who wishes to participate remotely, please digitally raise your hand. I don't see anybody present. Anybody remotely?
No, sir.
Okay, we're going to move on then to board comments. Trustee Lucido?
We had quite a few new hires tonight, so I just want to say congratulations to you and thank you for your service and look forward to working with you. And thank you to the Finance Department and the department heads and my fellow board members for the public hearing we had on the budget. I really enjoy being part of those. I know I'm not here on a daily basis, but I do like to be a part of those, so I do appreciate putting that on. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lucido. Trustee Nevers?
Yes, congratulations to our two new firefighters. Welcome aboard. And also to Amy and our Finance Department. And I too enjoyed the opportunity to be able to be a part of the budget discussion and interacting with the department heads. It was a delight. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers. Trustee Oliver?
About the same. Thanks for being part of our Macomb Township team. You're, it's nice to see that we're hiring, what do we hire, three people within?
Yep.
It's good to see that, so welcome. That's it.
Trustee Oliver? Trustee Kuzma?
Just the same thing. Welcome to all the new hires and the people that have advanced in the organization. I think it's a good thing that we're retaining talent. Also, the budget is very informative, the budget meeting we had, and this gives us a more in-depth perspective of what we're voting on and looking towards the future where we're headed, and I appreciate that as well. I have nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Kuzma. Treasurer Gillette?
Well, not just congratulations on the new positions, but thank you for being paid-on-call firefighters. That's an important contribution to our community as well, so thank you for doing that and then welcome to the new position. So it's great to have you guys here, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Clerk Posey?
I too. Well, congratulations to your full-time positions. We're happy to have you in full-time, and we appreciate all your services, paid-on-call as well. Congratulations to Amy. It's a well-deserved promotion. She's worked with Stacy side by side for quite some time in the Finance Department. She has supported our elections over the years, and she deserved the promotion, so congratulations to her. And I wanted to just take a second to thank Stacy for all of the hard work she put into the budget. She does the same hard work every year, but we put a spin on it with this board, and we did the public hearing a little different this year, which was extra work for her, but I think it was well-received by the board. They appreciated the interaction and their ability to work with her on that. So it was a lot of extra work, but I think she did a fantastic job, and I'm very thankful she's a part of my team. As for our Macomb Township voters, if you are on our permanent absent voter list, you have, you should have received your application to vote by mail in your mailbox this week. You must complete, sign, and return it to the clerk's office for every election in order to receive a ballot by mail. If you choose to vote in person, I encourage you to visit mtvoter.org and verify your precinct number and polling location as they may have changed due to redistricting. Of course, if you have any questions for us regarding the elections or voting by mail or in person, please contact our office. And I encourage you to follow our Macomb Township Clerk's Office Facebook page for important election updates throughout the election cycle. That's all I have.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Well, I might as well make it a clean sweep and congratulate our new fire, full-time firefighters, and thank you for the service that you've given to our community and that which you are about to do. I appreciate it, and good luck. And to Riley Hayes, we're looking forward to having her, and to Amy. So not only has, this is a great promotion for Amy, but, and again, I want to echo everyone's compliments of Stacy, but everyone should know that both Amy and Stacy have been working a person down for now, what, four or five weeks? So everything that we've put them through with the budget, they've been doing with one hand tied behind their back. So I appreciate all the hard work, coming in the extra time and doing what they need to do to keep us all moving forward, so thank you, Stacy. And just with that, I want to wish everybody a safe and happy Memorial Day weekend. Please take the time to remember those who have come before us and have sacrificed so that we can celebrate on this holiday weekend. And also, the township offices will be closed on Monday. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Fastest ever. Is there a discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Kuzma? Kuzma?
And I'm Posy.
Guys are confusing me. Vote, members, please vote.
See, we can do that to each other because we're of the same ethnic background.
Otherwise, otherwise it's a motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.